Access to Democracy is made possible by donations from the following organizations. Thomson Reuters, a global company with expertise and insight to unravel complex situations in the areas of law, tax, compliance, government, and media. Their worldwide network of journalists and editors keep customers up to speed on relevant global events. Thomson Reuters, the answer company. The division championship Minnesota Twins are looking to go all the way to the World Series in 2024, bolstered by inspirational shortstop Carlos Correa, a healthy Brian Buxton, and rookie phenom Royce Lewis, plus a pitching staff led by Pablo Lopez and an outstanding bullpen featuring Johan Duran. The Twins are the best bargain in the major leagues, and Target Field is the best venue in baseball. Sheridan Dulac and Kenz, PA, a family and criminal defense law firm, has been serving clients in Dakota County and throughout Minnesota for over 40 years. Ranked a Tier One Best Law Firm by U.S. News &amp; World Report every year since 2009, Sheridan Dulac and Kenz are here to help you in your most difficult life circumstances. Established in 2007, Forty-Fifth Parallel Spirits was among the first 50 micro-distilleries in the United States. Based in New Richmond, Wisconsin, all aspects of production occur at our facility. If you're interested in visiting and learning more about the Forty-Fifth Parallel Distillery, please check our website and plan a visit to tour our facility and taste our spirits. TruStone Financial, with locations in Minnesota and Wisconsin, has proudly served as members since 1939. TruStone engages, educates, and supports its members to ensure they have the tools to empower their financial well-being. TruStone Financial, your neighborhood credit union. Learn more at trustone.org.
Hello and welcome to this episode of Access to Democracy. I'm your host, Steve Francisco. It's a pleasure to welcome back to our studio today our good friend, Eagan City Council Member Mike Sapina. Mike, welcome back to Access to Democracy.
Thanks, Steve. I'm thrilled to be here.
Thanks for joining us on this beautiful summer afternoon when you could be out enjoying the weather and...
I already was. I did a bike ride, 12-mile bike ride this morning before I came here with my neighbor. Yeah.
Very good. So for our guest, you've been on the show previously, as I mentioned, but people watching today may not have seen the previous appearance, may not know about you. Tell us a little bit about yourself, where you're originally from, where you went to school, and what brought you to Eagan, Minnesota?
Okay, I'll try and boil that down to kind of a short paragraph. I grew up in New York City, Staten Island, New York. It's a more suburban part of New York City, out on the kind of a backwater, a little bit of a backwater then. It's been much more developed since then, so it's actually a lot of folks live there now. Went to school in Massachusetts, went to MIT as an undergrad, went to California for grad school, and then my wife got an offer from 3M when she finished her grad school out there. And so we picked up stakes and moved to Minnesota, which is probably among the best decisions we've ever made. We've been really happy here. We've raised three children here, and they've all been through ISD-196 schools and, you know, been successful there. So we've just been really, really happy with that decision.
What year was that, Mike, when you moved to Eagan?
We moved to Eagan in early 1993. We moved to Minnesota in fall of '92 and kind of scoped out to see where we wanted to go. And we did settle on Eagan. We, you know, my wife's an engineer and I kind of think like one sometimes. And we really did an analysis of every place we could live in the whole metro area, and we really kind of focused on Eagan and said, this is where we want to be. And we're still in the same house that we bought back in '93.
Oh, really? Wow, that's great. So you are by profession, long before you became a city council member in Eagan, you're an architect-
Yes, sir.
-and project manager. Tell us a little bit about what drew you to that profession.
I was interested from way back, you know, high school or even pre-high school. It just seemed like, I don't know, I loved buildings. I loved design. I loved kind of making things. And it just seemed like it was a synthesis of all of those things that I liked. And so I went to school for that. And between undergrad and grad school, that was the time to decide, well, what exactly do I want to focus on? Because architecture, as you know, is kind of a vast field, and you can do a lot of different things. And I really wanted to focus on housing. And almost every place where I've worked, even when the firm wasn't specifically housing-oriented, somehow or another, I ended up getting involved in housing. The last place that I was at, I was doing a lot of federal work, and they said, hey, we have some military housing that we're doing at some army posts. And they assigned it to me, and I, you know, got to do a few really big military barracks, which was a new experience for me, but it was really a good experience, too.
Sounds like you've had a very rewarding career personally and professionally, working in architecture and being a project manager. That's a very demanding job. Isn't it very stressful?
Yes. I won't-
Short answer, yes.
I won't sugarcoat it. Yes. Not all the time, but there are times when it can be very stressful. There was one of the, when I was doing some of the federal work, we were working overseas. So we were doing, working on some NATO air bases in the Baltic countries. Kind of a lot of foresight there. This was over 10 years ago, and of course-
Let's see, that's Latvia, Lithuania, Estonia.
Estonia, correct. And the idea was NATO wanted to start patrolling the airspace there with their modern jets, and they couldn't really use the old Soviet airfields with their modern jets, and they needed to be upgraded. So my task was to visit there a few times and write up the RFP that they could use to request for proposal, that they could use to upgrade these air bases. And yes, that was rather stressful, but it was rewarding work, and they're using them right now. And they're using them a lot. As we know, there's a lot going on in that part of the world right now.
And I would think a big part of being a project manager, you're constantly having to monitor the progress of the work and the contract, making sure it's being done according to the specifications, and also being done within budget.
Correct.
You don't have an unlimited amount of money to work with.
No, no. Yeah. And what I was managing was our design team, so I wasn't managing the construction of the building. That's for the contractors to do. And I would submit that that's probably even a more stressful job than I had. But even just from the design perspective, yes, you're needing to track folks and see what they're doing, and make sure you're not going over budget, and respond to changes that come up in the field. Sometimes they'll discover something, for example, in Lithuania, that you're like, what's that big pool of something in the middle of the courtyard, and we don't know what it is. And now we have to kind of figure out how to, you know, work around it or get rid of it, you know?
Interesting. So, Mike, you are what's known as a LEED accredited professional. Tell us what that is. What is a LEED accredited professional?
Well, LEED is a program for environmental, designing in an environmental way. And so this, boy, when did I become a LEED accredited professional? Probably in 2009, something like that.
And it's L-E-E-D. Do you know what it stands for?
L-E-E-D. Yes. Boy, I'm going to get the thing wrong now. It's going to be on TV. Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, something like that. And I'm still keeping that up, even though I'm not working, you know, professionally as an architect now. I want to keep that credential, so I'm continuing my continuing education on that to keep the credential. And basically, it's, you need to demonstrate that you know how to design according to LEED guidelines, which are very strict, especially on some things that architects don't really do themselves, which is the HVAC systems and the electrical systems. I mean, we have other engineers that work on that. But we need to know how it works, and we need to know how it works in an environmental way, plus, of course, the architectural parts of it, components that go into your building, how you design, you know, based on where the sun is and where, you know, how you deal with water, all those kinds of things.
A lot of things to think about. So one of the questions I wanted to ask you today, Mike, this experience you have as an architect, project manager, LEED accredited professional, how have you incorporated that experience into your role, your service on the Eagan City Council? I would assume there are some connections that with your career, professional background, that would apply to your work as a council member representing citizens of Eagan.
Yeah. And big picture is it's more just kind of a mindset and looking at everything that comes along, especially development projects, with that sustainable mindset. You know, we're not going to go in there and specifically start changing designs and messing with someone else's project. If that's what they're proposing, we have to react to what they bring to us. And of course, we can suggest things that we think would be better, you know, for Eagan, but we're not going to redesign their project. So I don't look at it that way, but I just look at it as, you know, I know what I want to see in Eagan. Does this kind of, you know, is it current? Is it sustainable? Is it something that will withstand the test of time over 50 years, that it's going to be here? And will, you know, will people be looking at it in the future as if it's, oh yeah, this is still something that, you know, this isn't a relic. This is still something that's up to date, and we feel, you know, we're still proud of it.
Right. So let's talk about some basics of the Eagan City Council. How many members are there, and what is the term?
Sure. There's five of us, including the mayor. And it's a four-year term. So we stagger it. Two of us run, actually, two of us are running this year, right now. I'm running. You didn't know that. I'm a candidate right now. We'll get to that a little bit later, but, and then there's, and then the other two, plus the mayor, run in the other cycle. So they'll be running two years from now.
And unlike a lot of municipalities, Eagan council members are elected what's called "at-large."
Correct.
In Minneapolis, they have a ward system. I think there are 13 wards in the city of Minneapolis that people run to represent their neighborhood, so to speak. But in Eagan, you represent the whole city, right? Isn't that what "at-large" means?
It is, yeah. And it has its pluses and minuses. The minus, if you're a candidate, is you have a whole city to cover. And I tend to like to campaign on my bicycle. And so every four years, I kind of get a really nice workout, and then I kind of-
That's why you're in good shape.
Yeah, right. Well, I make up for it the following three years, and then I have to start all over again. But the, so that, you know, and it's a big city, right? Even I've whined to our state representatives because their districts are actually, you know, geographically, probably about two-thirds the size of the geographic area of Eagan. So they actually have less area and less population to cover than I do. And they're not really interested in my whining because they have a lot of other things that are a lot harder in their job than in mine. So I kind of clam up after a while. And so that would be the downside. I think the upside of being at-large is you really do represent everybody. And I don't see Eagan as being a place where there's geographical interests, you know, like, oh, people that live in this quadrant of the city.
That are opposed to each other.
Yeah, exactly. And I wouldn't like the idea of, you know, somehow being in conflict with your colleagues on the council because, you know, they want something to happen over there, and I want it to happen over here, and they have a park over there that needs something, and I have a park. It's like, no, we're all, we're all looking at the whole city, you know, together.
So is it fair to say you get along pretty well with your colleagues?
Yes, yes.
That there's usually no knock-down, drag-out fights about differences?
Not since I've been on.
Thus far. You may have different views on policy, but they're resolved amicably and cooperatively. People work together well?
Yes. We're certainly not in lockstep on every issue. That should be expected, that we wouldn't be. But yes, we do get along really well. You know, we haven't had any, we haven't had to have any interventions from staff to-
Or the police.
-to take us aside, take us aside and talk sternly to us. So no, we get along, we get along well.
Good. Let's talk about some basics about the city of Eagan. There's an interesting chart that I came across on the city's website, and I want to touch on a couple of key facts in that. People may not know, how many people live in Eagan? What's our population approximately?
We're at almost 69,000 now.
Which makes us, what, about the fifth or sixth biggest city in the state of Minnesota, I think?
Well, we lost a spot because Lakeville passed us. I don't know. I might have brought this up the last time we met here in 2022. I still haven't gotten over it yet. So yeah, Lakeville's passed us, and now actually they're well past us. As far as, no, I think we're fifth or sixth. I don't know. I thought we're further down than that. Maybe we're around there. So Woodbury's bigger, you know, just as far as suburbs go, Woodbury's bigger, Lakeville's bigger, some other suburbs. And then there's, of course, the big cities. I think we're probably closer down to maybe 10 or 12, something like that.
And this chart that we're going to be showing our viewers here, hopefully incorporating this into the show, number of businesses, 2,450 businesses.
Nice.
Now, when we say businesses, we're talking mostly about smaller businesses, aren't we?
Absolutely.
They're not, I mean, there are some big businesses in Eagan, too. I know this used to be the corporate home of Northwest Airlines at one time, before Northwest became part of Delta. Now we have the Minnesota Vikings, a very well-known organization. There are some other businesses, Coca-Cola. Thomson Reuters is still here, although it's smaller than it used to be. But tell us something about these businesses.
Sure. Well, we, I mean, we absolutely value the big ones, of course. Thomson Reuters, quick story on that. As we discussed the last time I was here, when we were still in their building, when the studio was still in their building, we already knew at that point that they were going to be leaving that campus. And a little bit stressful because we wanted them to stay in Eagan. And I think they wanted to stay in Eagan, but that doesn't always work, you know, when you have a big business like that. As it turns out, we had another property in Eagan that hadn't been occupied, and it was a nearly new building, and it turned out to be a perfect fit for Thomson Reuters. That was the former Prime Therapeutics building on Ames Crossing. And they moved in there. In fact, they just had a ribbon cutting about two weeks ago and had ice cream, which was wonderful. I got in line twice, and don't tell anyone. And-
You're riding a bike. That's okay.
So it was a great, it was a great event, and it was just, they had all their employees come out, of course. Evidently, earlier in the day, they had barbecue or something for employees because there was just a sea of picnic tables out there. So wonderful event, and we are really thrilled that they stayed. And that is a feather in the cap, especially for our city staff, who really worked in, you know, concert with one another to figure out how we could keep them here. So-
And the chart on the city website, 2,450 businesses, a labor force in the city of 40,012 people, just over 40,000. It may have increased since then, I'm not sure. But approximately 40,000 people who work in Eagan. And of course, not all of those people live in Eagan.
Correct.
We have people who commute here from other communities-
A lot of people.
-the cities, St. Paul and Minneapolis, who come to Eagan to work. Very important in sustaining our tax base, isn't it?
Yes. And that's probably what we appreciate the most about having these, this diverse business, you know, environment in Eagan is our tax base. And we may be getting to that a little bit later, but, you know, we strive to keep our property taxes, residential property taxes, kind of the lowest among our peer cities. And so far, we've succeeded in doing that. And a big part of why we can do that is because we have this large and diverse commercial property tax base. And that's why we got a little nervous when we started seeing these big office campuses emptying out. So they will redevelop. I'm very confident that they'll redevelop and-
I was going to ask you that about the Thomson Reuters site. Do we know anything further at this point about what will happen to that?
I don't think I have any news that people don't already know. Ryan Companies, of course, purchased the site, and they have been, they have a kind of a master plan that they've put together that they've talked to neighbors about, and they've talked to the council and staff about. Council has, you know, on the big picture kind of master plan, we've essentially said, yeah, that looks good to us. Boiling it down, basically, it's commercial industrial on the 149 side, the Dodd Road side, and residential on the Elrene side. And every council member to a person said, we do not want to see commercial traffic, industrial traffic coming out onto Elrene. Then there needs to be, you know, if not a real wall, of course, there wouldn't be, but a virtual wall. And any of that traffic needs to be-
Would be separate.
-on the east side and not coming out on Elrene. And we're going to stick to that. And Ryan has heard us all loud and clear. The last time we said it to him, it was like, we know, we know.
Well, because their development, am I correct, they would have to get council approval for this. There are zoning requirements. They have to meet perhaps environmental requirements, city requirements. So the council would have the last word on any ultimate development plans they go forward with.
Absolutely. And I don't envy them because that's a big site, and it's a lot of work. And even just something as, you would think as simple as getting vehicles in and out is not a simple task. So they have, they have a lot, a lot of work to do, but, you know, we know Ryan Companies, they'll be able to do it.
And one last thing on the chart that we had up earlier, the average home value in Eagan now, this is $409,600. And home values, we saw a little slowdown, obviously, during the COVID pandemic, where there wasn't as much movement in real estate sales. But now with the pandemic and the rearview mirror, for the most part, we're seeing this acceleration in home values and sales prices. We're seeing it in the complex where I live, too.
Yes. That's one of those double-edged swords, you know. Those of us who own homes love to see our home values go up, maybe not so much as property tax.
But if you're a buyer-
If you're a buyer, yes. And I run into people all the time at chamber meetings, at, you know, Rotary, at other kind of local organizations. And sometimes it'd be, oh, I live over in Burnsville, or I live in Mendota. And I'm like, well, when are you going to move to Eagan? We want you here. And some of them say, I can't afford to live in Eagan. So I don't like hearing that because we need, I mean, we need to have a place for everybody, where everybody can live. And that's hard to do when you're a community that's much, very much in demand. That's the way markets work, right? That forces home values up.
I like the way you phrase that, a two-edged sword. And yet, there's definitely, Eagan's success, I think, as a community has been because it has been a diverse community.
Yes. Yeah. And we want to find ways to keep it that way.
Yeah. Let's turn our attention to another chart that we have. I think people are curious about what the city budget is. I know, before I was doing the preparation for today's interview with you, Mike, I realized I had no idea what the city budget is. What is Eagan's budget? How much money is the city of Eagan budgeted for this year, for 2024?
This year, we voted on it back in December. It's 52.3 million is our budget. And I would say over 40% of that is public safety, police, and fire, which should not be a surprise to anyone. I think that's pretty typical of every city, you know, similar cities to Eagan. Those are the expensive things, a lot of personnel, expensive, you know, equipment, that kind of thing.
And just to illustrate that point further, the chart indicates in 2022, the Eagan Police Department responded to 50,724 calls. I was surprised by that. It struck me that that was a very high number for a city of our size. But-
Yeah, I knew it was a lot of calls. I did not look at the chart before I came here. So 50,000, which of course, just do the math, that's 100 and whatever, 130, 140 calls a day.
A day, right.
Yeah, which is huge. And maybe I'll, maybe I'll be there for one of them. I'm doing a ride-along on Sunday night, coming up, whatever, a couple days from now. And we'll see, we'll see if there's any action that night. I'm not going to say I'm hoping for it. I would rather that we don't have-
Hope it's a quiet night, right.
That we don't have crime. I did a ride-along previously, and that, that night, there was not really a whole lot going on, which, you know, was a good thing, I would say.
And as you may be aware, we've had, Eagan Police Chief Roger New has been on our program several times now. He does a great job. The men and women of our police department, really exceptional people.
Yeah.
Just a great job.
Yeah, I'm really thrilled with the work Roger's been doing. We were at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference in Rochester a few weeks ago, and I, you know, was kind of picking out which sessions I was going to go to see. And as I'm looking through them, there was one on, actually, diversity and public safety. And Roger was one of the panelists, which I didn't even realize before I went down there. Probably I should have, but I only learned about it the day before. And I'm like, well, I'm going to that one.
Got to go to there.
And it turns out, I was there, Gary Hansen, my colleague, was there, Mayor Mike McGuire was there, and Diane Miller, our city administrator, were there. And we were right in the front row, and the first thing Roger did was look at us. He's like, oh, boy.
Like, oh, boy, they're here. My bosses are here.
Yeah.
And we can't leave the subject of public services without mentioning our Eagan Fire Department. Again, great leadership of Chief Hugo Searle, who has also been a guest on our program several times. They responded to 6,455 calls.
Yes.
And thankfully, these aren't always fires. There are sometimes calls requiring EMS response or other issues that come up in the community.
Absolutely, yeah.
But it's really something. So people are always curious about that. How big is the budget? Where does it come from, and how does it get spent? Want to shift gears. We're down to less than five minutes with you, Mike. And want to ask you, Eagan is really big on volunteerism. I know this because I myself happen to be one of those volunteers with the Airport Relations Council. We'll talk about those citizen advisory commissions in just a moment. But there was a very interesting event that the city of Eagan sponsored on April 11th this year, Volunteer Recognition or Appreciation Dinner, honoring more than 550 volunteers who have given over 7,500 hours of service to the community in the past year. What do you think it is about the city of Eagan that draws so many residents to volunteer?
That's a great question. And I would chalk it up to the fact that people, people like where they live, and they want to take some kind of ownership over where they live. And, you know, you can only go so far with that with your, you know, say, your job, or your family, or your church. But they're like, what more can I do? And volunteerism, well, first of all, we ask for volunteers, especially on city commissions, which you said you'll be getting to. We need them. It's not, it's not kind of just sort of a lark, you know? We really need, this is kind of what makes us work.
Let's transition to that right now. Eagan has several of the citizen advisory commissions. Do you know what they are offhand, or I can read the short list here?
Yes, Sustainable Eagan Advisory Commission, of course, Advisory Planning Commission, Airport Relations Commission-
Which I serve on.
The Parks Commission. And then we have the kind of, sort of, the one that's a little different is the Watershed Management Organization, which is kind of a joint commission that we do with Inver Grove Heights.
So the key word in this is advisory.
Absolutely.
These commissions, they do not have legislative authority. They don't actually make decisions, but the key word advisory, they advise city council, right?
Yes.
How useful do you find these commissions and the advice that they give you?
Extremely useful. And we've changed our process a little, where now we take applications year-round. If anyone's out there who wants to apply, find it on the website, and you can apply now. We don't make decisions until March, but now we don't have like a strict application period. We accept applications year-round. We'll just kind of set them aside until March and then-
And it's volunteer. There's no pay involved.
Yes.
City council vets the candidates. They have an opportunity to interview with council briefly so that you can learn about who the candidates are. And I know that the commission that I serve on, which I should mention is also chaired, the Airport Relations Commission is chaired by Bill Raker, who's also one of our hosts on Access to Democracy. The size of that particular commission actually grew a little bit because there was more citizen interest in that one, and dealing with noise abatement issues and things that we would make recommendations to the council about.
Yeah. I've taken upon myself, as one of my kind of tasks, is to just preach the gospel of these commissions and try and get more people to apply to them. And we, and it's, I won't say it's all because of me, but it's worked. We've had more applicants in the last couple of years, another double-edged sword, because it means you have to say no to more people. You only have so many spots on the commissions. And I hate doing that. But we need, we need all this talent that we have in the city, you know, to be part of these commissions because we use that. It's not, we don't ignore what they say. We listen very carefully what they're saying, so.
And I should say, too, that these commissions are supported by city staff, who provide staff support to them, help prepare materials. I can just tell our viewers and you, from my experience, I've served two years. I'm in my second term now on Airport Relations. Great experience for people who really want to delve into policy issues related to these subjects, and to learn more and to participate with your fellow citizens and be a big part of our community. It's really important.
And for folks that maybe aspire to, say, being on city council or any other organization, it actually is, you know, it can be used as kind of a training ground for that. So I came from commissions before I ran for council. Someone else I know is on Dakota Electric Board now, so.
Mike Sapina, member of the Eagan City Council. Thank you for being our guest today on Access to Democracy. Thank you for the work that you and your fellow council members do for all of us here in the city of Eagan.
Thanks so much for the invitation. Thanks. Thanks so much for the invitation. Thanks.